Hello, hello, hello. Welcome, welcome, welcome everybody to this Tuesday, Tax Day, Tax Day. I hope you guys took care of your taxes. Um, I just barely made it myself. Uh, man, I have a lot of money. But anyway, I hope you guys having a good evening. We're here, actually, there's a lot to talk about. There's a lot to talk about. So we're gonna have, I don't know how long we're gonna go, but this may be like Dalton meeting long. It depends, depends on, um, if I'm able to get a lot of these topics in and out because there has been a lot going on. So, appreciate you guys for hanging out with me. And, uh, let's see, I'm trying to figure out what should I talk about first? Which I talk about some, yeah, we're gonna talk about that. Thank you for coming there. We're gonna talk a lot about that, but appreciate you guys for coming in. Um, this is the Hannibal's Hungry Chan- uh, Hannibal's Hungry Channel. My name is Hannibal. And we talk about a lot of, I would say clownish behavior, um, people with patterns of behavior that takes advantage of people or just being weird. Um, obviously, I'm sure many of you probably came in talking, you know, watching about the Hanyard stuff. So, um, we have a lot to get into. It's not just this topic. Not just this topic. We have a lot of stuff to get into. But let's get, let's get some of the house keep- uh, keeping out of the way. Um, obviously, you guys can, uh, subscribe, hit the like, all that good stuff. I have the Patreon, I have the email newsletter. I actually have a podcast. I forgot to put the link up. It's more for people who may wanna listen to the channel. So a lot of the more popular videos will, or will be in audio form. It's already on Sp- um, Spotify. It's already on Apple Podcasts. Just type my name. You'll see my big, my big face. Subscribe, uh, so you get to listen to it without necessarily having to, um, watch the video if you don't have the time, if you're out on the road or doing whatever. Um, so you can check all of that out. But you know what? Let's just get to the, the meat and potatoes of, well, at least the first thing about the, I guess, DeMarcus Crigley, um, situation. I just wanna kinda point this out real quick. I, I want you guys to please give, um, give some love to Street Media Network. He actually had the Thorntownship, um, the Thorntownship body cam, which didn't do a lot when it had that big brawl and had a people, a lot of people fighting and the cops came. And they, it was one of the worst body cam footage. It's not his, not, well, I don't know who the person is, but it's not the person, it's not Street Media's fault. It's the person who took the four year request, looked at the video and decided to, um, cover everyone's face and basically cut audio of everything. It was, it was, it was a waste of time to check it out. I mean, South Holland really does not want to show anything, even though the township was a public area. The people didn't, didn't have the right to privacy. It was a public area. So it didn't make any sense. So they had the, the Marcus Crigley, um, arrest and this arrest happened. Uh, that, actually, if we look at it right now, real quick, it's not that much going on in this video. I don't know if you're not saying you need to hear the sound. Hey, DeMarcus. Good, how are you? We're detectives, we're South Holland. I need to talk to you, man.
You called me?
Huh?
You called me?
No, I need to talk to you at the station, man.
Okay.
Alright, put your hands behind, back here in the restroom. Alright. I'm gonna let the cigarette.
I gotta get out of town, okay?
Oh, let's turn off. Let's drop the cigarette. Alright, so that was it. Like, that's the entire video. And then it's, you know, there's again, audio being blocked. He gets arrested. Now, this happened on, I believe, I can look at the video. They have the, the date and time, actually. Does this roll up? Okay. So that, uh, you can see the date up top there is the twenty seventh. Um, and again, I, I appreciate Ricardo, you seen this through the other channel. It'd be great to subscribe to this channel, cuz that's where it belonged to, Street Media Network. Um, if you have seen the video, this is where this, this person was the first person that had the video. A lot of people are using it, but not, um, giving them credit. But this was on the twenty seventh. So I've seen some, um, videos today. And I thought that it's important to kind of talk about some of, at least some facts about this situation. So I saw some videos about the feds. This is the feds that are arresting DeMarcus Crigley. And Tiffany Hager must be shaking her boobs because, um, this guy has been arrested by the feds. They clearly say, when they approached him, we're from South Holland. South Holland is the, is the area where the Thorntownship, um, is located, the, the meeting, where they had that big brawl. So I don't understand, I'm very confused of how people thought that was FBI. They clearly didn't say we're the feds. They said we're from South Holland. So that was a bit weird about why that, anyone came to that conclusion? You could look it up, it's probably some kind of theft or something that happened during the, the fight. The one thing I, I think is a better, a big question is, throughout the entire brawl, why no one else was arrested? There was multiple people fighting and he's the only one that gets arrested? That, that's more of an interesting question rather than the feds, like, you know, i- i- it's kind of, it's, it's unfortunate because Hanyard does talk about the fake news and clickbait. If you guys have been on YouTube, I'm sure you guys came across tons of channels that are basically AI, like bodied, AI, like, we call it AI slop. It's not a real person. It's narrated, it's narrated by AI voice. And the, the, the titles and the thumbnails are so ridiculous. It, it just shows like no one is taking this seriously. Let me see if I can find it real quick. I think I, I made a little, had a little playlist of just a few videos I saw today. Let me see if I can show it to you guys. So, and this is just a, a fraction of what I see. I can make it a little bigger, so you guys can see. Tiff, oh, wait, a bit too much. Okay. Yeah. So Tiffany Hager snaps at her lawyer after she, after lawyer humiliates her in public. That didn't happen. Um, Tiffany Hager was arrested after heated argument at a town hall meeting. That didn't happen. Um, Tiffany Hager screams in frustration after losing a major corruption case in court. Like, this is, this is, this is silly. This, this is, you know, this, is, the story is already crazy, crazy. Um, like, it's already a part of, uh, of things that it's so hard to believe. There's no reason to try to, you don't need to add anything. You don't need to add much. It's already crazy. So I understand that the story is, is kind of, um, ramping down and it's not, not a lot going to happen. She lost the township. She lost the mayorship. This is it. And it's gonna be difficult to try to find other things that people are gonna be interested in. But there's tons of things that people are interested in. You don't have to make shit up. It's just like, don't have to. There's so much going on. And eventually, if the feds, uh, do arrest her or indict her, I'm sure that's, that's a bunch of, uh, more content to, to di- digest. Um, right now, the feds have only indicted, in terms of Hanyard's circle, they only indicted two people. Keith Freeman and, uh, former police chief Lacy. And both had nothing necessary to do with Hanyard. It was both bankruptcy fraud. That's it. That's the only indictment the feds have put in this situation as far as we know right now. You know, I mean, what federal crimes DeMarcus Crigley has been involved in or been accused of? I have no idea. Um, maybe they'll find something. I have no clue. I'm assuming whatever he's been doing, I know there's some accusations about some Airbnb's and other stuff. That's state stuff. I mean, unless he's moving across state lines to do some things. So I don't understand it, but I kinda understand it. A lot of people, including myself, have benefited from covering this story, but you don't need to make up. This story, it's so crazy that it, it, it's already seemed like we, we made it up. So you don't need to add more to it, but to each his own. But I just wanted to address that cuz I thought that was, that was odd, in my opinion. Um, but in terms of Hanyard, you guys talking about, you know, hanging your watch to see what's going on, she is still doing stuff. I just saw this on her, um, Facebook earlier today. Let me see if I can show that to you guys. So she's, she's still do, she's still, this, she's still doing her thing. This happened an hour ago. Residents of Thorntownship come out, Easter fresh food and produce giveaway this Saturday. So she's still, this is probably her, this may be her last public, um, I guess, uh, being a part of some kind of, you know, being a politician, uh, a public appearance. So she's still feeding the people. So that's what she is. That's what she's done. And she hasn't responded about any of the, of the arrest that happened two weeks ago. She doesn't have to. The game is over. She's done. So it's important. We gotta eventually gotta move on from this until she gets arrested, until something happens. Either she tries to do the influencer thing or get on some kind of reality TV show, or she goes and runs for another, um, seat in office. This is it. She has tons of losses to worry about, um, obviously, what's going on with the federal government. But nothing has happened yet. So you'll see a bunch of AI slop videos of her being arrested by the feds and it didn't happen. And they've been doing this for months. So this doesn't help that the rest of us that are trying to make, you know, we can widely speculate on things, but we can't just make stuff up. I don't think that's a good idea. There's enough going on, you know? So like, and anything you see, even stuff that I report, check everything out. You know, double, you can, you can go to the sources themselves, especially for indictments. Or give me some of the financial stuff. You can, a lot, public, a lot of it's public knowledge. It's supposed to be public knowledge. And the things that you don't see, obviously, is stuff that could be hidden in the background. But I just thought that was a bit weird. But that's what we gotta deal with, un- unfortunately. But we can also talk about things that actually, uh, do, are actually happening. And I thought this was a very crazy story. Um, it's, it, it's kinda funny, but also sad at the same time. But we have, we have an update. We have an update with, um, Mayor Kobe. Whoop, wrong one. There you go. We have an update with Mayor Kobe. Now, if you guys don't know who Mayor Kobe is, he is the mayor of South Fulton. He was the guy that was out there partying and he was doing all this international travel. He is, uh, I guess, one of the more, um, I guess, successful BML, uh, BM, well, Blacks Lives Matter, I guess I'll just say that so that I can't say the acronym. He's one of the activists that became a mayor. And at one point, he was out there traveling, spending a lot of money, um, going to Africa. You know, he's the man, doing all that, partying and whatnot. And then the South Fulton residents are saying, you know, where's the money? Who told you you can do this? What is going on? So we realized that effec- effectively, the, the, the council kinda kicked him out. Um, much different than, um, Dalton. You know, Dalton and other places that have the strong, um, mayor government's system, you can't just kick them out. But they effectively kinda kicked him out, actually kicked him out of the office. But anyway, apparently, he is, he's been evicted. So apparently, he can't pay rent either. So, and this is the biggest silliest situation is, he says the eviction notice from an apartment is politically motivated. So this happened almost about a month ago. And he was served with an eviction summons on March nineteenth. So, uh, we'll read, we'll read a little bit of this. The mayor of South Fulton, Georgia, Mayor Khalid Kamau, um, aka Mayor Kobe, is facing eviction from his apartment. A move he contends is politically motivated. How can you, how can an eviction be politically motivated? If you have an apartment and you don't pay the rent, and you don't pay the rent for a month or two, or three, or four, you will receive some notices. And then the final one, after the, after the person who owns the property goes to the court and the court gives them the grant to, for their eviction, that's when it happens, the eviction. What, how is that politically motivated? It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me, but this is what's going on. So Channel Two Action News obtained Fulton County's court documents, uh, indicating that Kamau was served, uh, summons, uh, for March nineteenth for one thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-seven, uh, cents and unpaid rent for that month. So he didn't pay his rent. Um, and he, I guess, he had to get evicted. He was pretty much done. The, uh, the residents of South Fulton have expressed mixed reactions for the mayor's financial situation. Quote, "You can't trust someone that can, that can't keep up their own finances and life to run the city," uh, a neighbor said, uh, Mr. Milton Williams. Um, conversely, another, uh, person argued that matters should remain separate from professional responsibilities. "It has nothing to do with his function as a public official. That's really his private life," unquote. So let's, let's, let's think about that for a second. Now, those who've checked out this channel and many channels talking about Mayor Hanyard and her eviction notice situation, her, her not paying her rent. People were very interested in that story. Um, I think eventually they paid, I think, um, I think, uh, Kam- Kamau, her, her boyfriend paid and ran off. I guess they're cool now. But I would, I would disagree with that statement. I think that it's important that the, the person you vote for is in charge of their life and they are able to handle basic things like pay for their housing. Because if you can't, if you're having financial issues or financial struggles, it's gonna be hard to run, it's hard to, to serve the public, I think. So I don't know if that's, I, I mean, that's what my opinion is. That's why I would run for office. I have, you know, I'm still dealing with financial issues. So I wouldn't necessarily run for office. I gotta take care of my own thing. So it shows the lack of financial stability, um, a lack of financial, um, just ability to, to hold your own and get your stuff together. If you don't, if you can't have your, you don't have your stuff together, it's gonna be difficult to take care of the, the rest of people's stuff. So that kinda makes sense, in my opinion. Um, this thing is bouncing up and down. I don't know what is doing this. So let me check this out for a second. So read the rest of the, actually, maybe I should turn some of this off. Let me see, can I pause this? Okay, cool. Maybe it won't bots around anymore. Okay. So in a statement to Channel Two, the mayor spoke about his eviction status and hinted that his reoccurring troubles may be politically motivated. So him not even paying his rent is politically motivated. How is his rent a part of the problem? It, it, that doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't make sense. He says, quote, "I wasn't expecting to need a legal team when I announced my reelection plans in January, but I guess that's how the political game is played now." I don't, I don't, I still don't understand. He's a public official, still, he's still a public official, and he didn't pay his rent. And he got evicted. What, I, I, I guess he didn't want that, that information to come out. Unfortunately, you're a public official, those type of things may come out, not being able to pay your rent. So, uh, Mayor Kobe earns about forty-seven thousand dollars annually in his part-time role. So, part-time role, which I would say you make it forty-seven thousand dollars at a part-time job, that means you could have other positions. That's not, that's pretty decent. Um, equated his financial challenges to those faced by many Americans. "I represent over two hundred million Americans who womb, to whom an unexpected expense of a thousand dollars can mean financial ca- um, cash, financial, uh, I can't, I can't talk right now. I think I'm, um, passed out right now. But financial ruin, right? It can be financial ruin if you don't pay the, if you don't pay this. So, to response to these, uh, such house, housing challenges, uh, Georgia enacted the Safe at Home Act, the bill, uh, four oh four in two thousand and four, twenty-four, signed by law by, uh, Governor Kemp. This legislation introduced protections for residents who face eviction and predatory housing practices." You know, the, the, the problem is with, with that statement, uh, Mayor Kobe, you were spending all types of money traveling all over the place. You were spending money, taxpayer money, going to Africa, going to these places, pretending that it was supposed, it's supposed to be for economic development. And now you couldn't pay the sixteen hundred dollars of rent because, why? And now you're using this, you know, you're just a regular person? Regular people don't go back and forth and fly to different parts of the, uh, the world as they're supposed to be taking care of their own situation. So that's a pretty lame excuse. And that's why he had, this, this man has as many troubles as he currently does. Because he can't just take accountability. He can't just say, you know what, I did not manage my finances well, so I get evicted. I couldn't pay the rent. I was supposed to pay the sixteen hundred dollars. Couldn't do it. I have some financial issues. I'm not good with my money. And that means that's what happens when you don't pay your rent. You know, it, it, things get taken away from you. But it's never someone else's. It's always someone else's fault. It's always, it's political, uh, attacks on me. So many of these type of mayors, so many of these type of mayors have the same excuses when things go wrong. It is someone else's fault. I am being smeared. This is a political attack. It's never, this is my fault, right? And when, when you sign a lease for an apartment, whether it's a year or two years, you're responsible to pay the rent every month. The first of the month, we all know this. This, this is, he's, he's, this man's an adult. We're all adults. And when you don't pay, there's a problem. Now, there's re, there's ways you can justify not paying. You can say certain things are not being taken care of. The landlord's not doing their job, whether it's black mold in the apartment or there's some kind of vermin or things are not working, certain appliances, things that you guys agreed on when you signed the lease, that you can say, you know what, I'm not paying this rent until these things are taken care of. Those things make sense. But he didn't mention that. He just said, this is politically motivated and I'm struggling like everyone else. Come on. It, it, yeah, it, it's, yeah, and it's, and we all can, I think that's a, it's better to just straight up say, I need to get my financial, uh, situation order rather than blaming other people. Yeah, a lot, we're all struggling financially at one point or another, some better, some more than others. But the idea that you have no idea what's going on and this is, this is attacking me because I decided to be, to get, uh, to run for reelection. You were already arrested for trespassing. That was weird. You've been effectively kicked out of your council cuz they thought that you know, you, you know what you were doing. You were just spending money, pretending that you're a celebrity, and now you can't afford your rent. That's no one else's fault but your own. So I don't think he's going to, he says he's gonna, uh, run for reelection. There is no way he's going to win. He is going to probably, uh, be done with that. Uh, Stephanie says accountability is another thing. When you're a politician, all your enemies are either racist or jealous, right? It's always, it, it's, and then, it's effective to, cuz it, some people do believe in that. They believe these people when they say are being attacked. And I think as we see more and more of these mayors and all these crazy things that they're doing, we can kinda tell that, no, that's not true. Um, these people are not victims. They are responsible in their own nonsense. They're responsible for what they have done. So I just wanna run that, just a little, little update on Mayor Kobe and his nonsense. But, um, I wanna slide right into this, uh, judge who shot her boyfriend in the face. I'm sure if you checked out a few videos, I've, I've done a video on this a while ago. Uh, now that the, I guess, the, the conviction has landed. But it is, it's insane.
Or love, a shocking.
Not yet, not yet. Um, just absolutely insane what happened in this story. And if you guys haven't checked out, we'll, we'll, we're gonna watch this together. Um, cuz sometimes you, you ever hear a story, hold on a second, hold on, I mean, I hear something. Okay, cool, got it. You ever hear a story so crazy, you have to pause and blink twice and like, wait, she was a judge? Like, how she was able to became a judge? And this is Sonia McKnight. She wasn't just any judge. She sat on the bench, um, in Pennsylvania. Black robe, the gavel, the whole vibe. And but, but behind that polished courtroom look, turns out she just had a lot of red flags, uh, in, in terms of dealing with relationships. And this is, and also, she's, well, actually, let's, let's watch a little bit of this first and then we'll come back. Let's watch a little bit of this.
Story out of Pennsylvania for you. A judge's boyfriend tries to end their year-long relationship, tells her she has to move out. In response, she shot him in the head while he slept.
Like, that's, that's not funny. I don't know why I laughed. It's just so re, like, it's so maddening. Hey, you, you know, this is not working out. You're gonna have to, you know, leave and move out. Like, this relationship is not gonna work. We had some, we had our good times, but I don't wanna be in a relationship with you. And then she turns around and while this guy's laying down, shoots him in the, in the head. Yeah, I just can't make this up.
Now, he miraculously survived the shooting and testified against her at trial. Welcome to Sidebar, presented by Law and Crime. I'm Jesse Weber. Well, it didn't take very long for a jury in Pennsylvania to find former Harrisburg District Judge Sonia McKnight guilty of attempted murder. Yep, you heard me right. Prosecutors say she was a scorned lover, and when her boyfriend at the time insisted she move out of his home, she fired a gun at his head while he was in bed, possibly trying to stage things to look like a suicide. But that boyfriend, well, ex-boyfriend, Michael McCoy, lived to tell the tale, and he did so on the witness stand, and we're gonna get to that.
So, yeah, so again, she shot her ex-boyfriend in the head while he was sleeping in his own bed. The man that was peacefully sleeping until this judge pulled the trigger. Um, so this guy's name is, uh, Michael McCoy. He was a regular guy, just probably just trying to enjoy a, a quiet night after Sonia, after telling Sonia to move out, probably for the thirty-seventh time. But she wasn't having it. And instead of packing her bags, she packed some heat. And fortunately, McCoy survived miraculously, but he lost vision in one eye and probably gained enough trust issues to last ten lifetimes. So this was not out of the blue explosion type of thing. This is the second time Sonia McKnight's name has showed up in the news with a gun in her hand and a man bleeding in the aftermath. So there's a situation that happened back in twenty nineteen. She was involved in another shooting. This one was with her estranged husband. She claimed it was self-defense and the investigators let her walk. Let me repeat that. Back in two thousand nineteen, she was involved in another shooting. This, that one was for, with her ex-husband. She claimed it was self-defense and the investigators let her walk. So you think, okay, maybe once was a mistake, a panic, a fluke. But again, now, back in a year ago, she does it again. This time, a man that wasn't even arguing with her. He was unconscious, dead to the world. And the only thing that was stopping this from being a full-blown murder case is pure dumb luck or bad aim, uh, who knows? I mean, it's a blessing that this man didn't die because if he did, she would have been able to get away with this again. I mean, let's be real, most people don't survive, wouldn't survive a bullet to the head. But McCoy did. He, he woke up with, with, uh, head, he woke up with a headache, pounding, blood pouring. When asked who shot him, he basically said, "I live with one person," and she was standing right there. So what's even crazier in this situation, she, she tried to act innocent. She tried to make it seem like this is gonna, this was a suicide. Her defense tried to argue that he shot himself. Yeah, because what most people do while they're sleeping is accidentally put a bullet in their own head while laying in the bed with no one else in the house. Like, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So therefore, the jury didn't buy it. They convicted her of attempted murder and, um, aggravated assault in just two hours. So this, this, this was a very easy case to, to, to decide. That's quicker than, you know, most times you, you're doing a lot of these trials, they take forever. This is pretty obvious. Um, if, you know, you, you know, you have to know that the evidence was overwhelming in the jury to say, yeah, she, yeah, she did it before their sandwiches got cold for lunch. But this was a scary situation because Sonia McKnight wasn't just some regular person or, you know, some toxic ex. She had power. She wielded a lot of power. She was trained in law, criminal behavior, courtroom procedure. She knew exactly how to build a case or this, or in this situation, I would assume how to dodge one. But this is the thing that's just fascinating. Yet with all of that insider knowledge, she couldn't even like orchestrate the crime scene. She failed at murder the same way she apparently failed at keeping her ego in check or keeping a relationship, um, healthy. So like, that's the problem with a lot of narcissists. They think they're untouchable. They believe that the rules don't apply to them because there are the rules. This woman judged people for a living, sat in courtrooms deciding who was guilty. Meanwhile, she had obviously some unchecked unresolved rage, a loaded gun and a track record that obviously should have disqualified her from even owning a, a water gun, let alone a Glock. So eh, it just, and also, the problem is, she was already on thin ice before this shooting. So in two thousand twenty-three, she was suspended without pay for violating her probation. She wasn't even supposed to be presiding over cases. And instead of reflecting or getting help, she was just continuing to spiral into colla- uh, into chaos. So I believe that is narcissism one-on-one. She could have walked away. She could have packed her bags, respected the breakup, mo- and moved on. Instead of, she chose violence. She chose to be judge, jury and almost an executioner. Uh, totally crazy, totally crazy. Um, Stephanie, if this is how you handle a breakup, how do you conduct yourself in a courtroom? And that's an interesting thing. And I saw, I saw a little, a few, uh, interviews about what happens to all the cases that she presided in. Do the defense lawyers say, you know what, this, this person was kind of a wacko? Maybe, maybe we need to get a new trial? Um, does everything she did, is it, you know, it's, it's up for scrutiny, probably? Because it seemed like her ment- her mental health is, was definitely in question. Because this wasn't just one bad decision. This was a pattern. A character flaw that's so deep, it bleeds to your jobs. It bleeds to your relationships. It, it bleeds to her entire sense of self, right? We, we're talking about, um, these small-time mayors, but they have a little bit of these issues. Uh, and she's in trouble. So her sentencing date is next month, the twenty-eighth. Her max time is sixty years. Um, McCoy, you know, great that he's alive. It's a blessing that he's alive, but obviously traumatized. He's half-blind. Like, imagine that. Like, imagine you, you find someone and the relationship doesn't work out and you think, maybe I can just move on from this. And you have someone that, she's been a judge for, probably for a long time and probably doesn't get told no a lot. And thought, you know what, I, I'm above the law and I don't wanna leave your home. In fact, I'm gonna take care of you by pretending that you took, took yourself out. And I almost got away with it back, uh, back in two thousand nineteen. So I do agree with Ash, yes, definitely needs to go in the house. Something is just not, now, all her dogs were, are not, were not barking at that. Um, that's interesting. All the defense. I, I'm not sure, I know that it was discussed. That's interesting. All the defense, I, I'm not sure, I know that it was discussed. Um, I saw a few, um, interviews and some, some, you know, I guess some commentary. If I was a defense lawyer and I knew I lost a case where I really thought that it, it should have went a different way? Yeah, of course. If I would have been at jail right now and even if you did it, try, get another trial. I mean, you get another crack at it. Um, clearly she doesn't have, didn't have the, um, the mental fortitude and capacity really to be a judge in the first place. But I guess she was able to pass the test and was able to do what she had to do. But her reaction when things go wrong, who knows how she presided over the cases that could have affected people's lives? So if I was, if I'm a defense attorney, I am definitely looking to get another, uh, trial, another crack at it. Definitely. Yeah, imagine if she didn't get off the first time. Yeah, I mean, i- i- if they would have honestly looked at that situation and realized that it probably wasn't self-defense, this man would have vision in both eyes. But unfortunately, um, he has to deal with that traumatic experience for the rest of his life. So, hopefully she stays in jail. I don't see, hopefully she gets enough time where she spends the rest of her life in jail. Cause that's, you can't have those kind of people. We have too many crazy people already out here in the world. We can't continue to have more of them. So, uh, you know, good luck to McCoy. Um, I want to, let's, let's, let's get into what the main part, or I want to talk about this, this situation that happened in this area, another small-town situation. You know, we, we, we do a lot of small-town, um, cases because local government affects you more than you think. So we're gonna, we're gonna watch the small clip here so you guys have an understanding of what, what's going on here. About this, about this, uh, this, this, this law, this, this, the mayor getting removed from a city council meeting. So this, I saw this a few days ago and I was like, this is outrageous. Uh, as most, most of these things are. So, let's, let's, let's set this up so you guys can check this out. Cause it's gonna be, this is gonna be a news, um, story which is about two minutes. But then we have someone who actually, uh, saw this in real time of what was going on. So, what if I told you a mayor got removed from office, right? Showed up to a public meeting, sat down like nothing happened and then got arrested. So, this was not in Florida. This happened in Walport, Oregon. Population, I didn't check it, but small probably, but the drama is pretty enormous. So, there's some shady backroom meetings, some locked doors, some power trips and a former mayor that says, I'm not done yet. So, the question I wanted to ask you guys is, was this legal? Is this ethical or is just Walport, like Walport just has like the world's pettiest HOA with police power? So let's get into it. Um, let me show you this story and then we'll kind of dive deeper into this.
The recently elected mayor of Walport was removed from the Walport City Council meeting last night. The week before, the council had voted to remove her, saying she broke the city's charter. Our Joey Vaca explains all this.
The Walport City Council voted to remove elected Mayor Heidi Lambert following complaints against her. The council says those complaints show she broke a rule in the city's charter. The Lambert says it's not that simple.
I realize that I have a constitutional right to assert my seat. That I was an elected official.
Before she was cited with disorderly conduct and removed from a council meeting, two city employees filed complaints against then-mayor Heidi Lambert. The complaints from back in March say Lambert aggressively asked for scanned copies of letters in her mailbox. And the employees say the exchange left them shaken. The council heard the complaints and last week voted unanimously to remove her. They claimed it violated Rule 21G of the city's charter that says no council member can directly or indirectly direct a city employee in their duties.
So this is very interesting. So I didn't check what kind of mayor system they have, but clearly for them to be able to vote her out is definitely not a strong mayor. So imagine if, um, Dalton, right? Dalton had that ability. They probably would have voted her out a long time ago. They tried, the only way they, the only way they, the only thing they had that would, that worked was the fact that they used, um, the recall, but again, the recall didn't work for various reasons that I'm sure you guys are tired of hearing the same, the same answer. It didn't work because the voting was not done correctly on the voting, uh, for the, for the recall. They had the question, two questions. Do you want to recall? And then should you recall? Where it should have been just, do you want to recall? It, it was a whole mess. But anyway. So they, they were able to do this, but this is where things will get a little messier and you guys will check it out. Thank you, Brandy. So the population was very small. Very, very small. So let's see what else is going on here. So they, you know, they're able to do it. And she, I guess, came back to sit down and they were like, no, you gotta get the hell out. Let's finish the rest of this.
Lambert tells me this is a complicated situation because community members had written formal complaints to her about the city manager that were labeled confidential.
I went and to pick it up and it had already been opened. And it had already been sent to the person that the complaints were about. Um, and that was where I was confused. And so I asked the, um, city clerk to email the council those complaints. And I was told that was not what they were directed to do.
Lambert has hired a lawyer who tells me she has no interest in suing the city she was elected to lead, but is prepared to take this issue to court if it's not resolved. And what's happening now?
I'm fighting for my seat. I have to stick with my voters and I have to keep run, keep fighting for my seat. And I, I guess if it's decided that, um, I can be removed, then I'll have to be reelected.
I did ask to interview the city council. A counselor got back to me saying the city attorney advised them not to comment publicly on the situation. In Walport, Joey Vaca, Coin6 News.
Okay, so let's, let's get the cast of characters here. So you have the, I guess the former mayor, uh, Susan, um, Lambert, right? So she's the mayor. She got removed under some, some circumstances, some cloudy circumstances apparently. Then you got the city council. They, they, they're out there playing 4D chess, right? Except there's probably no rules and there's a broken board. And then you have the sheriff, uh, Sheriff Schenks, pulled up like this was, I don't know, cops and decided to do what he had to do. So now no one is saying exactly why Lambert did to get it removed, right? That, I mean, that conversation, it just seems a bit odd. It's, it's a little murky. But the city council swears it was for the good term of the town. So what does Lambert do after this, right? She shows up for the next public meeting, public city council meeting and pulls a move. Uh, you guys will see it. She just walks in and takes her seat at a table, like no yelling, appearing, no speech, just as if she never left. It was like as if this was the, the episode of Seinfeld where Constanza gets, he quits. But then he realizes it's a bad idea and then Jerry convinces him, just go back to work like nothing happened. It, that'll work. Obviously that didn't work, but we'll, we'll check out this situation in a second. This was from, actually where, 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 where is this from? So you guys could know.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Nope, that's not it. So, uh, did I put, okay. So this is from Rebel With A Cause. You guys can check this out. Subscribe to the channel. Actually, I didn't subscribe. Look at me, messing up. So this, uh, Rebel With A Cause and the video is called Illegally Removed Mayor Arrested After Power Move. So in, in his, in his opinion, they believe that this, this person believes that this was, uh, um, this was not a real legit situation here. So let's watch the video and then you guys let me know what you guys think. This is pretty long, but we get to see exactly what's going on in this situation.
Howdy, howdy folks. We are here at the Walport City Hall today to cover the apparent removal from office of one Heidi Lambert. I don't have all the information. I'm gonna try to see what I can learn about that today. Uh, apparently she was trying to either submit records to go on the public record or retrieve them and asking employees to get them for her, which was a violation of her office, I believe. So, I'm not exactly sure. But apparently a minor detail, uh, was the reason for her removal.
Done something illegal and been adjudicated. She has to be charged and found guilty.
Right. So there's not been charges or anything?
Nope, there has not. As a matter of fact, they haven't shown any process. The accusation was harassment and a hostile work environment. Harassment requires a protected, uh, subgroup, which isn't one here. Because a woman can't have a harassment suit against another woman. And you can't call hostile work environment after one issue. The law says it has to be more than one. So they have no grounds for firing her, no reason for letting her go. And they intimidated her and then they put it in the newspaper that they released her. So they've used the public media in an inappropriate manner and that's an abuse of their power.
Well, that is why I'm here as independent, uh.
And I have a copy of the charter if you want to see.
I would like to. Yeah, yeah. At least let me get a picture of that real quick.
So from, from right here, it seems like, again, patterns are important. So when you, when people decide to kick a mayor out or whatever, a public official, it can't necessarily just be one problem. It needs to be a pattern of terrible behavior, unethical behavior or illegal behavior. If it's just she told someone to print something out, that's not enough. And they were so shaken by it. I mean, that seems a little weird. I mean, we weren't there, obviously, but it just seems a little off just by, um, some of the stuff I'm hearing right now.
What's the pertinent parts here?
Well, it's 29, what creates a vacancy? And you'll see it's death, adjudicated, uh, incompetence, conviction of a felony or a crime pertaining to the office. Unlawful destruction of public records, resignation, which is what they tried to force by bullying her. A recall from office, which is what Oregon state law says is the only way to remove an elected official. And she has to be in office six months before they can even start a recall noticing.
All right. So based on that charter, how she's, she, how she's not the mayor? Like ba, so they had the same, they had the same, um, concept as most areas. You need a recall. It looks like she hasn't been there long enough for a recall. It seemed like they didn't like her and then immediately wanted her out and thought this is gonna be able to fly.
So they can't do that one either. Ceasing to possess the qualifications for office, which would be like living here or the other qualifications. Or failure to follow the appointment to office to qualify. Again, she's already done that. So they have, they have no grounds to pull her out of office.
They're in black and white. One and one is not making three.
It goes for them.
Right, right.
So they're trying to, you know, do an end run around and it just doesn't work.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And it also shows in small government, how often these type of things happen. Because they think no one is paying attention. And the smaller the area, the more power these governments have where they think they can, if you get enough powerful people or influential people, they can do weird stuff like this and no one knows. Because like I said, this place, you know, Brandy said, population is less than 2,500 people, that they can do these type of things and think no one's gonna notice. They're worrying about other things. And that's why it's important that people that do step up and, and challenge, uh, the government. You got, you elected these people, you need to hold them, um, accountable.
And are you affiliated with the city or are you just a citizen here in Walport?
Citizen and I really resent them taking my vote away and doing whatever the hell they want just because they have a disagreement with somebody.
Well, I, I appreciate hearing your opinion, boss. There's the shot. So right now they are still in executive session. And it is 4:08.
So, so basically this is an illegal meeting because the mayor was not legally removed. So this meet, so this meeting means nothing. The mayor's outside, I'm assuming, or maybe she's there. I don't think so. I think, so this, this meeting right off the bat isn't, um, a, a legal meeting.
This executive session, which I'm hearing, I have not confirmed, was not posted beforehand.
Oh no.
But with this many people confirming the story, it'd be hard to doubt. Yep, you're on camera, lady. Man, that window is dirty. Seriously, this widow is cruddy. Last time she'll be power washes building.
No, she's, she would rather, she would rather sit right here. So like sitting out on the farm is like.
Oh, she really gonna block this window? This lady is really gonna block the window. Check this out. She is really blocking the window right now.
Oh, that's, that's, that's always a good start when you, when you want to deal with people who have, you know, nothing to hide. It's blocking windows when you couldn't hear anything anyway. So to me, it looks like there's violations, big violations. And for Ricardo, what channel this from? This is from Rebel With A Cause. And it, it, it looks like there's some issue with some people with agendas back and forth. Clearly this was a neat, in my opinion, and it's, and I see right here, this was an illegal executive session. You can't, you can't, you can't do that. So what is going on here? Obviously you see that the constituents outside, they're pissed off. What's going on? Why did Sheriff Adam Schenks decide to arrest her? There's a lot, there's a lot going on. So let's, let's check out more of what's going on here.
What, are you that afraid to have your picture taken? You are being childish. You are being childish right now, people. Children, you're acting like children.
Howdy, howdy. Another day.
So I guess this is where it's gonna, where the arrest is gonna happen or she's gonna be escorted. So as you see, um, Lambert sat down as she usually probably, she probably supposed to be sitting in the middle. She's the mayor. And the sheriff is there ready to, I guess, remove her. So we go, we're seeing exactly, in my opinion, right off the bat, and actually I didn't watch the entire thing, but right off that, this is illegal. Not enough time has passed, not enough has been said. What else did she do? Did she take money? Did she travel to Africa? Did she spend $150,000 on a Tahoe? Did, did she, did she pay overtime, over a million dollars to have police follow her? We need more than what is currently, it's not enough here. That's, you know, it's not enough.
You voted unanimously to fire. Stand up and unanimously vote to keep her.
We voted her in.
I didn't write this in my vote. I heard.
Who's presenting? You have taken away my vote. You think we're gonna forget that? We are not.
Never, never forget that.
Stand up. Somebody stand up.
City council is in the wrong. 100%.
Recall, recall.
Yeah, really get them nice and close. We know who they are.
Right.
Yes.
She was elected.
The charter is misinterpreted by Dan Cutter like every other charter law.
How corrupt.
We now know this. We know this.
I think very carefully, Sheriff. I would think very carefully.
There is state law that no elected official can be removed for the first six months.
There's so many laws being broken. Right now, we're gonna watch it happen. We're gonna watch it happen.
Let's get their names.
So we're slow on Susan Wood right there.
I need to hear my name, Miranda Rights, before I speak.
You gotta be kidding me.
This is, this is kinda crazy. This is kinda, this is actually baffling. So she hasn't been there for six months. They're, and they already just, they just made up some rule, like, no, we've voted you out because you asked us to do this one thing. If, if people are yelling conspiracy, it does, it sounds like conspiracy to me. Like, this is very like, again, they're figuring out like, why is she's being removed? She's being arrested? Like, what is this? This is, what is this, Soviet Union two point O? Like, what is going on here?
No way. City council.
Shame, shame.
Recall, recall, recall.
This is bullying.
You will not be.
Shame it did.
Well, you can't even hold your head up? Look at what you done. Look at what you done.
Uh Carnage, that's actually a pretty good point. It probably, it's probably she's not playing ball. She's not doing what the re- rest of the city council wants her to do, and they want her gone. And they thought if we can um pressure the person, make some fake weird excuse on why we need her removed, and no one's gonna talk about it because this place only has two thousand and some people. Who cares about this? And that's the problem with now with social media. You may think you can get away with it, but you can't.
That was a couple of weeks ago.
No.
What's your name, Sheriff? What is your name, Sheriff? What's your name, Sheriff?
A shameful, shameful.
I'm sorry, sir, you're not allowed beyond the stanchion. I'm sorry, you need to go on this side.
Don't you fucking touch me, ma'am. Don't you fucking touch me.
You need to be on this side of the stanchion, please.
You heard him, don't fucking touch it.
I didn't touch him.
Yes, you fucking did. Don't fucking lie to me.
Excuse me. Thank you.
Alright, let's all calm down a little bit. Alright, let's all calm down. Yeah, this, this is happening across the country. So you don't have to worry about necessarily Tiffany Hager stuff is over. Like, that is some, oh, that is it looks like it's illegal. It, it looks, it looks illegal. Very, very shady, very, very shady. She should show up until they recall her. It's supposed to be a recall. Do the recall. If she's that, if she's that terrible, they'll recall her. They'll get her removed. Hagered did get recalled in terms of the votes. More people voted to kick her out, even it happened, that, that happened two years ago. If you believe that this person is what you say, remove her from office.
Yeah, maybe you should have had a card and not before.
We did.
It was not.
They went through and you followed them. You seem angry, you're shaking. Are you alright?
Oh, I am absolutely, I am fine now. Are you proud of your actions here today?
I, 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 absolutely. What did you expect me to do?
How dare you?
You're proud of blocking off the window so the media cannot view this illegal executive session? Yes, I know that was you. I know that was you.
How can you do this?
Valentine. Excuse me, people. I run around this way.
Yo, this guy ain't playing around. He's trying, he's trying to get to the bottom of this. He ain't playing around.
So you're not gonna do anything about the illegal executive session today? Deputy Shanks.
I'm gonna ask you, sir, just to step back. You can report and you can do what you want, but I need you to step back from my, my area right here.
I'll take a step back.
Let me read some of the comments here. Um Darkborn says the state should open an investigation to the city council and the sheriff for misconduct. His certification should be pulled for falling up, failing to uphold the constitution. I think the sheriff is actually the, the uh lady over there. I think she's the, is she sheriff? One of those two. I think it, it could be the lady, but I could be wrong. Um why does she sound like a former cop? I, I don't know. Um Bob says the opposite of Tiffany Hager. The township wants to keep her mayor. It could be other council members whose actions might be illegal. I mean, they already did by, just by kicking her out is illegal. So they're already meddling in uh legal, like, I don't think this is definitely ethical, clearly not. Definitely, it don't seem illegal. It seems illegal, so. Most states do not care what happens at local levels unless it impacts money and even then, I mean, Yang, Yang, you, you're a hundred percent right. I mean, just look at what happened in Dalton and Township, no matter how embarrassing that situation was. How embarrassing that situation was. It didn't matter. It didn't matter. They didn't care. Um the governor didn't care. He didn't care. Uh it, it's not that big a deal. It has to be, yeah, you, like, I, I believe what you're saying, it has to affect them in the pocketbook so much that then they would do something about it, so. Better to be an asshole than being a whole ass. I like that comment. I like that one. Oh, really? Well, thank you. Appreciate it. I mean, do, I'm gonna still be doing the lives at least once a week. Um usually, I go live during the meetings and city council meetings, but I think at this juncture, stuff like this is happening, we need to, we need to get live, we need to talk about it, converse, all that good stuff. So let's finish the rest of this.
So no action on the illegal executive session today? That's a law. Aren't you guys supposed to enforce all laws? Aren't you guys supposed to enforce all laws, Deputy Shanks? This meeting that was not posted for the public.
So Tracy K says, does the city manager have the legal right to open contraventional mail to the mayor, especially since the twelve letters were complaints about wrongdoing by the city manager? Conclusive interest. And I, she said, if you guys remember the, the beginning, um the, the news segment, she said those letters were opened already. Who opened them? And then I, I guess this, whoever that there was some complaints about, they did not want those complaints to come out. And they, they probably believed that this mayor wasn't gonna play ball and then she had to go. And everyone that was there to allow that to happen were in on it. All those council people that sat there and allowed this to go on were in on it. So what is really happening in this town? I, I would hope so, Carnage. I would hope so. I mean, that's a, for, for two thousand people, that many people that basically crowded that room, you don't need anymore. Yeah, I mean, you know, it's a small town, it probably doesn't have like the, the, you know, tons of people voting, you know, like you saw from that, um Dalton and Thorn Township. I think it was less than twenty-five percent actually voted, so.
That is illegal. Are you gonna do anything about it? Oh, you have to get orders. You have to get orders for that, huh? Just the officials that you like don't get this kind of treatment or? What's, what's the deal?
Who can issue orders and who can't? That's the problem, right?
Yeah, who, who would issue you the order to deal with this illegal executive session? Yeah, who issued you guys the orders to come out here today? Who called you guys to come out today? Huh, Shanks? Was it Cutter? I don't know the guy. I'm just asking questions. I never heard the name before today. You gonna confirm that, deny it?
So I think right now they're getting this, writing her a citation. So let's see, does, does she go back or we'll, we'll finish this up and see what happens. Let's see if I, should I skip some of this? Let me see.
Walk over here. What was the other sheriff's name, just so I can get out of here and go back inside? Yeah. One more time, sorry. Dorsey? Alright, thank you. Looks like you guys got it handled here. I am so sorry about this.
And you have an obligation to post your minutes and you're not posting your minutes, therefore you're talking about people in executive session without letting them know?
Wait, what? You see that? They didn't post minutes. Then no one knows there's supposed to be a real meeting happening, didn't have executive session about, what's go- like, what is going on? This is, this looks really bad on these, these, these seven people here I'm looking at right now, or six. This looks terrible. You have to post the minutes. That's one of the things I did learn. A lot of the local government knowledge. I realized that, yeah, you have to make sure the meetings, the, the minutes are, are sent. It looks like two days before the meeting. All those little small things that a lot of us didn't know, now we do. And this, this, this group of people are, are blatantly destroying all of those rules.
Conspiracy. That's not okay. You're making decisions in closed session. That's not okay.
Not okay.
Not okay.
Rick, Jerry, I've got hope for both of you.
Really think so, both?
Time to stand up. Time to stand up.
I'm curious. One more point here and then I'm gonna try and be quiet. I went to the meeting at community center prior to election run by the Democratic Party. Both of you running for mayor and Heidi. Why are, you're not Santilia's daughter?
No.
Who sent her? She's not there anymore? Period?
No, she lost.
Okay. But Jerry, you were there and you said, no, you really didn't want to take this position. But you were there as a third candidate. So why, why were you in the group chat there with how many of us were there? Thirty, forty? And you're sitting on council? Are you gonna be appointed?
Okay, so this is the guy that they're having some issues with here, the city manager. So something is going on. And Brandy, yeah, apparently six, oh, what, what's, what's the cabal? Like, what, what is, what is going on? They, they don't wanna say. So she, yeah, Joshua, appreciate the four nine nine super chat. She should lawyer up and immediately take this to court. I believe a judge would rule to have her reinstated. Absolutely. There, there's so many issues here. And if if they were in any, if they were in the right, that someone would step up and talk. You can tell by their bilingual language, they all feel really shameful. There's a lot of shame here, or maybe they don't give a damn, but I just feel like if, if they really cared and believe what they were doing was correct, someone should talk. I mean, the, then, the whole population of Waldorf, uh Waldorf, um Waldorf, Walport, Oregon is in there probably, and they need to speak. Yeah, Mike, this is in Oregon. A s- a small town in Oregon, um Walport. Am I saying that right? Hopefully I am. And um the, a lot of legal shenanigans is happening right now.
And it is the incoming mayor? He did not run for mayor.
He ran for council.
He ran for council. Why were you on, why were you upfront with the other two then?
Because there were only two of us who agreed to.
Oh my god, we are not appointed.
It was about the mayor though, wasn't it?
Council member that chose.
You answered every question that we sent to the mayor. Why were you there? You had no part of it.
Yes, I was invited. All running.
I was invited too. We were all invited.
We were all invited. He was the only one that could tell how the council represented that day.
You should have been an audience member.
Well, I was invited to, um.
So my question is, are they passing the torch to you for becoming the next mayor? Is anybody on board guiding the torch?
Appointing the mayor.
We have not actually ordered yet.
What does the process?
That's it. You guys are giving me a mayor anyway.
But I suspect what will happen is that, what, what I believe anyway is the voters choose the next mayor. We will not choose the next mayor. I don't believe, I think that we are at a.
What is, man, uh, uh, this is just a big cluster F. Um Brandy says some dispute uh between Walport, um Beachcomber Day offices supporters in the city. Uh she violated the city charter by trying to direct city employees to deal with uh Beachcomber complaints instead of working through the city manager, Dan Cutter. And that's it? That's, you loo- you lose your ability to be mayor off of this that can't be just a a discussion, a comp, like have a, a meeting and kinda work this out? That she was so aggressive that they were so scared they had to kick this person out? Uh Carnage says, it's the, the charter says city council, not mayor. I just, I mean, the amount of the things that we see mayors get away with and, and this place, as soon as she did this one thing, she's out.
She can run again, I guess.
She didn't do anything wrong to be voted off.
I know.
Voted out.
Not at this extreme level. I don't understand.
The only thing that's been provided was upload an email.
Right, addressed to her.
I'm curious. I don't know the story. I don't know any of you. From one of your guys' words, what happened that you guys ousted her?
Oh, who's in charge of this meeting? Is it Dan Cutter?
Mister Dan Cutter over there silencing the public information. Anyway.
Due to a possible legal litigation, we are not, from Heidi, we are not allowed to speak on that matter.
So, so Dan is running, so Dan is, is the real mayor. So the, the city, the city manager is telling everyone to shut up, don't talk about it because he's running the show. I mean, I, I would say you kinda have to tell the public what happened, to have some level of explanation. Can't just, I mean, I think they, they eventually have a, a, um, a notice later on, but this is not a good look.
Real informative, thank you. That's real informative, thank you.
Uh, that's from her attorney, sorry.
Heidi will be coming back in here with the citation.
Good.
So no comment on why there was a unanimous vote from all of you to oust Ms. Heidi? So no comment on why there was a unanimous vote from all of you to oust Ms. Heidi?
Part of the media.
You have an important question, and I'd like to address it.
Please, yes, thank you.
I believe that if you will read the statement that was just placed on the website this afternoon. From the council.
Okay.
Council speaking, not the city manager, the council speaking. What happened, as we saw it, and what we did, and why we did it.
So you have released an official statement on the website?
Yes.
Okay.
Where is the investigation?
If I could ask one more question, if I could ask one more question, and then I will step down and yield. I have heard several allegations that this executive session you were in for a while before everyone came in here was not posted online, do you have any comment on that?
Yeah, but at four o'clock.
At four, not a closed session at three.
There, I, there is a difference between the city council session and an executive session, and an executive session needs to be posted beforehand.
You had us locked out and you guys were in here in executive session at three o'clock.
I walked in the door at three fifty-five.
Absolutely not, you walked in, I saw you walk in.
Yes, but it did not start until four o'clock.
What was the executive session about? Why, why was the executive session not posted?
It was posted.
Not enough time.
So you guys didn't say a word to each other?
You don't care about us at all.
No words, you sat here and saw it from three to four.
You don't care about public opinion.
You don't care about your citizens.
So how long ago was it posted? You say Monday or Tuesday?
Why was the door locked the whole time that we were out there, and then we went around the side to stand undercover, because it was forced down rain, because we couldn't get into city hall? And you guys closed the blinds on us? Why were we locked out of city hall?
It's an executive session, no one can be in here, even the officers.
Actually, you had a representative of the news media here, don't lie.
This is insane, Wyoming girl, appreciate the follow-up super chat, I live near Walport. Do you have any insight? I think someone else actually lives near there too. This is very, like, you know, I keep saying, this type of thing is happening across the country, and even where you probably are living, especially if you live in a small area, small towns where it's not that many people. And enough people got upset, and I feel like the city council are not, if you're hundred percent correct in what you did, you should be able to stand up and able to explain it. It may not be necessarily the most popular decision, but the fact that they're not being really honest, they're not being really transparent, locking people out, closing, closing, basically covering the doors, keeping people outside, how many times have we seen this type of thing happen in, in local government? Local government has so much more to do, or in terms of the fact that they have in people's lives that we care to find out. And this type of thing is happening where they can't just explain what happened, or we put, we put something on the website. Well, you, this is a meeting, it's only 12,000 of y'all, let's, let's, let's try to be more of a community, explain what is going on, but it just seems to me that there clearly is some shadiness going on, clearly.
We had to read it. You had to read it? They had to go in the back room, because we had our.
Do you get that we're mad? Do you get that?
So.
Do you care about our feelings or our opinions or my vote being disenfranchised? Do you care about that? You took away my vote. Do you care?
Let them answer if they're, if they care first, because they didn't have.
I don't, they don't seem to be, oh, I care.
They're looking at Cutter to see if he says it's okay to answer.
Thank you, Wyoming girl, just a great comment here, so small town, the mayor and the council are not, are unpaid, the city manager has more power than the mayor, and there's a power struggle between the ma, mayor and the manager. Seems like that's what's going on. And I guess this is where the people are mad, like, hey, we voted for this, this person, you tried to kick him out before the six months before the recall? Not good. Yanks said, if I had to guess, someone has been in a position for too long, too much trust to the council to trust their words. Trusted, that may be a good point too, if, if this guy has a lot of power and influence, he may have been able to either convince or intimidate, or even just persuade to say, you know what, we don't need this person right now, let's just take her out, get someone else to jump in and be the mayor, maybe they will play ball. And maybe whatever complaints are about the city manager won't necessarily mean anything, because we have another person that we can trust to get that position.
They all looked at him, and then he said yes or no.
Mr. Cutter, it's really bad form to smile during this, there's a lot of really, there's people that are really upset, and every time you smile, it's really disrespectful to all of us that are here.
Look at him to see if they can answer or not. He's the one that runs it all. Yeah.
I didn't vote for him. Right? Nobody voted for him, he controls the narrative to all of you, none of us have access to any of you. And we know now, I'm somebody who didn't know any of this before, I know now. I did not know before, I know now.
Dan Cutter did not write the statement, I wrote the statement myself.
Was he in the round?
No, he was not, it was in the middle of the night, last night.
So funny, so funny.
They won't share anything. So Dan's talking again, you guys, let's listen to what he has.
How about you just listen to us, Dave?
Oh, now he's asking what they want to do.
Wait, Bob, the current city manager, I, where you are, earns 300K, where you live? You have to tell us, you can just go around. I need to, I need to apply to be city manager. I mean, I don't know if they're probably going, I don't think Cutter is making that much, maybe? But he definitely has some power, the way he's, the way he's speaking, and the way he'll look over, and these six, these six folks just, just don't have a lot of strength. And I agree, he definitely needs to be investigated, this is crazy.
We want a mayor, we want our mayor back. Yes. Who are you?
Heidi back. We voted for her, you had no right to do what you did.
This town should come to a stance though, until we get our mayor back. There's nothing, you have no other business, jeez.
Take note, the two people laughing in the room, Dan Cutter, Susan Woodruff.
Hysterical, wildly funny. You, you said, it's not changing right now.
Wyoming girl says the Walport city, damn, that's not, that's a, that's a nice amount of money. That's a nice amount of money, I'm assuming the, the living expenses in this area are probably not as high as New York City? Probably not, you could probably go pretty far with 100K. And with that kind of money and power, I mean, the fact that he's laughing, he thinks this is funny, he thinks he's gonna get away with this. The level of narcissism, I don't know what, what it is about that personality, well, no, no, I'll take that back. Of course you would want to be in politics, or in power. Those are the kind of personalities that thrive, they want the power, and when they get there and they get it, they do whatever it takes to keep it. This is crazy. Yeah, minimum age is sixty, so it's all, it looks like retirees and whatnot, all these old people, listen, old, old people, we call them OGs here, okay? They care the most. Because I think, I think as you get older, you really understand how the world works. And you see how things are done, and you see who's really pulling the strings, and who's doing what. You're not running around trying to figure it all out, you already kind of figured it out, you either, you, you raised your kids, you got grandkids, and you look around and you say, what the hell is gonna happen in here, like what, why, why certain things are the way they are, and you have some more time to kind of figure this out, so. You know, all, all love to, to, to the, you know, the OGs out here, trying to make a difference.
Raise your hand and say, I moved, that we reset our thing, and everybody can vote, you can be done in two minutes.
You could have done that before the sheriff took her.
Yeah.
You could have all stood out and voted unanimously to keep her as our mayor.
If you got power to oust somebody, you got power to.
Again, you could have all unanimously voted to change your decision.
Sorry.
Before she had to be taken out of here by the sheriff.
Yeah, you can do it anytime.
We voted her in, and I, I don't like losing my vote.
That's their request. Listen, can I have just for a second, guys?
Sure.
Ms. Lambert's sitting right here, obviously, we just discussed in Delver, we had to.
Gave her a ticket.
Yep.
She is backing her as a citizen at this point.
Hannah Mayer.
I'm not disputing any of this, I'm just letting you know that she's sitting in the crowd. We have to be able to maintain a meeting for this, this council.
Why? Why? They didn't uphold.
So basically, they still fundamentally kicked her out of the meeting. They may not, she may not be able to, they didn't kick her out of the, I guess, the hall. But if she can't sit where she's supposed to be as the mayor, the sheriff still fundamentally kicked her out of the meeting, still kicking her out of her duty as a mayor.
We are telling them what their agenda needs to be.
I understand that, but we have to maintain peace in the meeting. They need to be able to hold their business without.
This is the business. This is the only business right now.
I understand, but they have a right to hold their meeting.
We elected you, we have a right.
Hey, that's the sheriff, let the sheriff talk, he's not on the council, he's the sheriff.
Don't give it in.
Let him speak, let's just hear him out. Letting you know that statutorily they have a right to conduct their business.
Or get arrested, is like how you get here?
They can be asked to leave, we can go through that process, I don't want to get there with.
I don't blame you, that's a really, really tough look. You're in right now, I would have really had a bad look.
It is very tough.
You have a whole.
You want to smoke for you guys? Everybody is elected officials here. I'm just asking for everyone's at least.
They're not even letting public comments. Seriously, when, when, when is the?
No public comment? So clearly, I've seen enough, at least, we're about, we're almost done. They're shady, and they're hiding something, no public comment, they had a meeting right before four o'clock, it was exactly meeting, pretended it wasn't. There's a lot, there's a lot going on here, that screams that the mayor, Heidi, she needs to lawyer up and get her seat back.
So what are you saying? Get to the point.
I'm asking for you to let them conduct their business.
No.
This is their business.
This is the town decision. If she gives a nod, can I ask, why was she arrested?
What was the charge?
Yeah, what was the charge? What was the charge?
My charge was disrupting the peace.
Crazy. Disrupting the peace.
The peace of what?
She was sitting in her chair.
When it came down to.
But I also support him, I support her being our mayor.
The decision was based on the council's call to remove her.
But it's not.
It's one man's interpretation of a charter. Which is misinterpreted.
This is part of their meeting now. Yeah, she's the mayor. She's the mayor. They have the power to turn this around right now. We are, we are not on the righteous side of it.
She was voted in, by all of us.
Working on a main peaceful, with what's been conducted.
I agree, we're not gonna get anywhere by interrupting. These guys aren't gonna change their mind, they're not gonna release the information they used to do the investigation. It's all gonna remain hidden, it's gonna take a lawsuit to get it fixed.
Well, now, that was all I said, we know.
The city can get the information, and show what you did. Thank you very much.
Each one of you showed your true colors to your community, there will be a recall guarantee.
There is gonna be a recall, oh, totally, oh, yes, we're done.
We didn't do the attempt.
Shame, shame on you. With a petition for a pardon. Yes, you will be seen at all.
We'll be voting our mayor back in, Mayor Heidi. We'll be voting her back in.
Alright, we're at, we're five minutes into the question, the minutes, committee reports, and experimental entry resume having been overturned. Are there things to change on that, or can we get a motion to accept those?
Well, it looks like they're just gonna do, just gonna go with the meeting, I'll watch another minute to see if there's anything else happening.
I got a motion, can I get a second? I got a first and second, all those in favor? All those opposed? And I hope you guys have, it's almost a weekend, a great weekend, meetings adjourned.
I'm gonna need your name, please. You work for the city, right? I need your name, please. Ms., what is your name? You had plenty of confidence to throw a table in front of the window and to come touch me, what is your name? You work here for the city though, obviously, so it's a matter of public record? I need your name, so I can file a public records request about it. You're digging your hole deeper here, just give me your name. I mean, all of these deputies were willing to give me their name. What is your name, Ms.? You are that afraid of transparency?
Those about to cry or something?
Well, I can't request the information unless I know her name. Alright. Excuse me, Dan, what is this young lady's name?
I'm sorry?
What is this young lady's name? Because I need it for a public records request.
For a public records request?
Yes. So what's her name, so I can fill it out?
All of our staff has information, I'm not gonna provide third parties' names.
Very transparent of you, thank you. Excuse me, boss, can I get this young lady's name that works for the city?
I, unless she wants to give it to you, sir.
Well, it's a matter of public record, I need that so I can fill out a public records request tomorrow.
Dan, what, what?
Yo, do you, listen, Dan is running the show. Dan is the man, Dan the man, hey, Dan, can, can I answer this question? How do you want me to answer it, Dan? Can, you know?
Okay, if you want to send a public request, request in for our.
You are making this situation worse for yourself by doing this.
I'm sorry?
You are not being transparent here, you are shadowing, unveiling the truth from the public.
The group what I saw today was attacking you aggressively, I have, I will follow the lawsuit.
We shall see, we shall see. Very cowardly actions.
Alright, I think we're, we're good for this one. I'll keep a track on this one, this was crazy. It, it is definitely a lot of nonsense happening in that area. Wyoming girl said, you know, it's, it's becoming a hard place to live. Lady of the club, what's going on, this was in Warport, Iowa, so let me show, let me show it again. So, please, guys, I, I, please remind me to put some links in the description, sometimes I forget about doing that. But this was a rebel with a cause, and he has a pretty good breakdown exactly what happened. And they arrested, they arrested the mayor for disturbing the peace. She was cited and released, but returned in a meeting as a citizen, so she was effectively kicked out of the meeting. And a lot of people, now let me see if they, did it have the statement, let's read the statement before we, we, we move on to the next, oh god, this thing is, can't even see the statement. God, it's a long statement. And they posted that about five days ago. So we'll just get a little bit of why they, they kicked her out. They said, "On May 25th, Mayor Lambert came to city hall, she aggressively demanded staff to follow her direction and create a hostile environment for them that was unnecessary and unlawful, the act described in two letters of the complaint and supporting witness statement violate the rules established under the city charter. Many cities throughout Oregon have almost identical law, elected officials don't get to boss staff around." Is that actually, they actually wrote that? That's very professional. That's, that's, so that's, is that like legal jargon or something, or that's how people talk? Legal officials don't get to boss staff around, like? Yeah, that's, that's, so that's, is that like legal jargon or something? Or that's how people talk? Legal officials don't get to boss staff around? Like, okay. Let's read, let's read the rest. "Our staff did the, did the correct thing. They repeatedly directed the mayor to the city manager's office. What the mayor demanded did not matter. That is our community law as established in the charter and this charter the citizens of Warport adopted in nineteen ninety-six. The council received annual training on the charter. Just this, this year, just a month before, the charter and our council rules guide how we must behave. Unfortunately, the mayor refused to follow the staff's direction to follow our charter's rule. Instead, she continued to escalate the situation until the staff had to walk away from her." So as you guys, uh, talked about in the comments, that there's definitely an issue was going on between the mayor and this city manager. But at the same point, they still have to follow the rules. It hasn't been the six months. You can't just kick the mayor out. It doesn't make a whole lot of, uh, sense right here. Whatever personal problems the people have and how all six council members went, uh, vote against her. And when the citizens asked her for more, or asked them for more information, they all looked at the city manager to speak. So I don't think this is a, I don't think this makes a whole lot of sense to me. But, um, please check out this, uh, video from Rebel With A Cause. I will try to put the, remember to put the link in description, but a very crazy, crazy story. Absolutely insane. Um, I hope they, they get their just, uh, due and put her back as she belongs. Um, Yan says, "I'm guessing staff is supposed to report to city manager. Elected officials are supposed to go to the city manager, giving all authority to the city manager." And the way he was chilling, like, yeah, he was like, "If anyone's going to bother me, they gotta go." And I think that's what, what broke down, so. But let's talk about some more Illinois corruption. Let's talk about more Illinois corruption. Let's see, which one is the older video? Uh, give me a second, guys. Let me check this out. Is it this one? Four days ago or? Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll watch this one first. So guys, we got, we got another one here. This is Emerald, Emmy Jones the Third. And we'll show a little bit of videos so you guys know what I'm talking about.
The latest public official to see the inside of a federal courtroom here in Illinois. He is also the first sitting elected official to be tried since former Alderman Patrick Daly Thompson's conviction on tax fraud in two thousand and twenty-one. Jones deciding unlike others caught up in that red light probe from a few years ago to take his chances with a jury. Emil Jones the Third walked into Chicago's federal courthouse today, ready to face a jury of five men and seven women who are now charged with deciding whether the state senator is, as he's been accused, guilty of taking bribes from SafeSpeed, a red light camera company that operates in some thirty suburban municipalities. This was politics for profit, said Assistant U.S. Attorney Prashant Kaluri during his opening statement today. The crime here is that the defendant put his power as an Illinois senator up for sale, and then he lied about what he had done.
Oh, of course. Well, of course that happens, Ill- Illinois. So, um, Emerald Jones the Third, he didn't just fall into power. He, you could say inherited it. His daddy, um, Emerald Jones Junior was the president of the Illinois Senate and was a major political heavyweight. And when he retired in two thousand and eight, guess who slid right into that family seat? Or that seat. That's right. Junior tapped in for the job like it was, you know, family barbecue, you know, not really a democracy, but you know, he got, he got the job, whatever. But here's the thing, this wasn't just some fresh voice of the people's situation. It was more like, you know, call it nepo baby, whatever you want to call it, um, cruising through elections with little opposition and even less attention until right now. So because Illinois is not a matter if your elected officials are corrupt, it's when to get caught. Like, that's how it works. It's always that way. So let's, I will put a little bit of context in this situation. It's, it's two thousand and nineteen. Um, Senator is sponsoring bills to study the effectiveness of the red light and speed cameras across the state. You know, those annoying, uh, robo snitches that catch you slipping when you run through a red light and remind, and mail you, um, uh, basically an order that you owe a lot of money and you become poor. But on a surface, it needs, it, it seems like a very noble study, right? A study, accountability, transparency. Maybe he is really for the people. Unfortunately, no. So this, uh, owner, Omar Maney, the co-founder of SafeSpeed, is the red light camera company that's made to millions by sucking money out of people's wallets. And obviously, he sees this bill and says, "You know what? This is too much for me." So therefore, he reaches out to Jones and says, "What if he paid your intern to do nothing and you rewrote this bill that it only applies to Chicago?" "Why Chicago?" you may ask. "Because SafeSpeed doesn't operate in Chicago." So it's like you asking the bouncer to only check IDs at the door that you don't use. So this is what is going on. Let's finish the rest of the video.
The trial is the first case from the sprawling red light camera investigation to go before a jury. But Jones is not the first public official to be trapped in it. Both the late state senator Martin Sandoval and Crestwood's former mayor Louis Presta resigned their positions and pled guilty to accepting bribes from SafeSpeed some years ago. Testifying for the first time today is the man who brought about their downfall, former executive turned government mole Omar Maney. Omar Maney is a serial briber, said one of Jones' defense attorneys in his opening statement, adding that Jones himself was innocent of the charges against him. Those charges allege that in two thousand and nineteen, shortly after Jones introduced a bill that called for an analysis of all red light cameras in the state, he was approached by Maney, who sought to prevent that from happening. Over the course of three meetings, all of which will be played in court, Jones has heard agreeing to modify the bill to only include Chicago's red light cameras in exchange for a five thousand dollar contribution and a job for one of his interns. And while that.
Why is he fighting this in court? Why, why is he fighting this in court? Why don't he just like take, give up like everyone else did, the other two guys? Why is he, why is he, why is he doing this? So there's, there's, there's bribes, probably talked over at dinner tables. So they meet up for dinner and offer the five thousand dollar bribe plus the fake internship for Jones' associate. Jones looks like he may have taken it. Why is he fighting this case? I, I don't get it.
That may not sound like much when compared to the recent trials of former Alderman Ed Burke and former Illinois House Speaker Michael Madigan. Legal analysts say going after all public corruption, big and small, is about deterrence.
That's the goal. Um, it's the goal in Madigan. It was the goal in Burke to send a message to our ruling class that you better mind who it is that you're working for.
Well, I'll tell you, I'll tell you right now, it's probably not working. I mean, they're still, they're still doing what they have to do. I mean, I, 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 it's a, it's nice that they're doing that, but they need to do so much work that it, it's overwhelming, the amount of corruption that's happening in this area. So let me show you guys a little bit of what the, of what Emerald. Damn it, pressing the wrong button. Okay, pause that. Okay, bring it back. Okay. So this is some, some, some interesting footage. And also another question, why it took, why it took so long for this case to even be brought to trial? Like, this happened five years ago. Well, when you're powerful, you get enough time to do whatever you want. So here it is, some evidence that, uh, Senator Jones is screwed.
So let me ask you this. In an ideal world, how much would you want me to come up with or raise or what have you? I'll have another one. Thank you. You tell me a number.
I don't give a fucking number. Just whatever you can raise for. That'd be nice, you know?
I don't know if you guys can hear. If you guys, I'm going to try to raise the volume a little bit. He's, he's, you know, the, the mole, the, the snitch is, is asking him, "How much money do you think I can, do I need to give you to get this to go?" And Jones is like, "Oh, you know, whatever you can, whatever you can come up with." He ain't, he ain't throw, he didn't throw a dollar of value, but he's definitely interested in whatever that, um, the mole is suggesting to do.
You tell me, you tell me what, because I always like to have a goal. I mean, I'll, I'm gonna do it, but you know, I just, you know. I'm very easy.
What's it gonna take us to want to tell him how much to bribe him with? Throw a number out. Hurry up.
No one's never asked me that before.
I'm a different person because I always want everybody to be happy. And, and I like to, to make sure that, you know, you know, I need expectations. That's my question every time.
You already need expectations, Omar. You're a good guy. I'm a good guy. I, I like you all's company a lot. If you raise me five grand, that'd be good. That'd be good.
He's literally on camera taking. So you see the mole and, and Jones is meeting for dinner during the meal. Omar, he, he, well, first of all, he offers a bribe and it's, it's Jones that threw the number out. Why did he take this case to court? I'm baffling.
Most importantly, I have an intern working in my office. And I'm trying to find him another job, another part-time job. He's an engineering major. Do you all have any positions available?
We, we, we do. We can. If he's an intern, um.
Some just part-time, a few hours out the week.
So probably what I could do is get him, and I, I'll, I'll confirm it. Give me, so I'm going to see everybody on Tuesday, but I, I, I gotta do it the way I do it, because I don't want to tell anybody. If he has the resume, if he can send me the resume, um, what I'll do is I'll talk to, to everybody at work. What we could do is put him on as a, a part-time reviewer. When do you have like, when's like your next job there or any of those, um, events?
There's a lot of steak. I'm getting hungry. I want, I want steak right now. I'm starving.
I just sat down with a, a young lady and so we put it together within the next sixty days.
And there's enough stuff for me to cover for five grand. You just tell me. I mean, I don't care, you know? I'll do it anyway. It's just, I just want to make sure that, you know, everything's kind of quiet. That's all I want to make sure.
Yeah, usually when I get people to sponsor, they, they'll just take care of.
The food or?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, so.
Done.
This is terrible. This is the kind of issues, uh, they dealing with. And obviously, Jones didn't realize that this Omar guy flipped and started cooperating with the FBI, got, wore wire, got everything on tape while they're sitting there eating delicious steaks. If, if Jones, you hear Jones saying, "You can't raise me five grand." That's not a slip up. You're, you're doing, you're in some kind of corruption, clearly. You are, you are in trouble. So, and this is, and also, this is, he got indicted in two thousand and twenty-two. Jones gets indicted in federal charges for bribery aligned to FBI. So you think that'll be the end of it. You think their career will be over, named, be shamed, seat vacated. But where you, we are in Illinois, right? Well, this is Illinois. We're not in it. The man gets indicted and still wins reelection, people. This man wins reelection unopposed. Bro, didn't he, didn't even need to have to run a campaign. His name is on the ballot and it's like a bad subscription. You forgot to cancel. So it doesn't, it didn't matter. So let's not forget, he lies to the feds and, and they're trying to finally get this, 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 uh, case going. He pleads not guilty, steps down from the leadership role in the senate, but not his seat. So let's not get crazy. He did step down from his leadership role, but not from his seat. So we'll see what's going on here. There's a lot of other crazy stuff, some details as well, but it just shows that even if it's small bribes, like five thousand here, five thousand there, there's a problem. This, this is, this is where we have these issues in our government and especially in Illinois. They don't play around. It's all about the money. It's all about the money. It's not about anything else except about that cash, unfortunately. Hundred, hundred percent. So, fi, and who know, who knows what other bribes this man is getting? So Carter says, "Only five thousand this dude could have brought him a Cadillac." You know that there's, he has side hustles of, of other allegedly, I'm just guessing, just wildly speculating, that if he's asking five thousand here from this guy, he's probably asking for ten thousand for someone else, probably more than some, another person. Whoever is willing to defer some cash, Jones is willing to work them out if they could do some certain things to make companies money. I mean, this is politics. It's corruption. Uh, it's, it's, fine. This is how it works. Look at Steak Forty Menu. Oh, well, since we were just sitting here doing nothing, maybe we could check out Steak Forty Two's, uh, menu. I mean, I'm kind of hungry. I like to look at food. I can't afford right now. Let me see. Let me look at it real quick. Steak Forty Eight. Uh, Chicago, Illinois, right? Uh, my, my stupid, uh, let me see. So I can see it right here? Yeah. Is this it right here? A hundred dollars per person? So I don't got that kind of money. Let's look at the, where's the, where's the menu at? I want to see the menu. Let's see. Ooh, let's see. Oh, these prices, are these prices on the calorie count? Uh, this must be the calorie count. This can't be the, this can't be the price of the, of the, of the liquid, right? Yeah, Cabernet Reds. This must be the calorie count. That can't be the cost. That can't be the cost, right? Oh, let's go find the food menu. Yeah, there's still old world Reds, like, is this? Maybe they're missing the, 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 the decimal after the number? Yeah, that must, that, that's probably calorie count. Hold on. I'm trying to get to the menu. Let's see. Okay. That's very expensive, but I'm assuming that there was not, that wasn't a price. That was how much calories you, you, you will consume by drinking it. Uh, it has to be it. Uh, let's see what they, what else they got. This is three years ago, so they probably had it changed. You can get prime steak meatballs for twelve bucks. So just, just, just realize these prices are going to even be more than than we have now. A tomahawk for, a tomahawk pork chops for fifty dollars. A bone in, bone, bone in veal chopper for sixty-eight bucks. They got, they got fresh food, fresh seafood here. Wow, they got, they got, I mean, it's a nice menu. But do you guys, do you guys like restaurants with a lot of items on the menu? I tend to, I tend to like restaurants that are really good at one or two things. They don't try to go crazy, but this must be a really good restaurant. But this, this, this is from three years ago. How much, what's the current menu? I guess they have some of the stuff right here. So you get a New York strip, a twelve ounce for forty bucks. Get a petite filet mignon for forty-nine dollars, that's eight ounce steak. You get the twenty-two, uh, twenty-two ounces ribeye for sixty dollars. Not too bad. Not too bad. Anyway, what was that about? We looking at food. Listen. We can't afford it. It's ta, it's, it's tax day today. I don't have enough money to spend a hundred dollars per person at a steakhouse. I could make a steak at home. Steak prices are kind of crazy, too. You like a dessert? Yeah, yeah, that, that, that carbs for me. Yeah, that bread, it gets you full. I could try to eat some of that, the, the meat and the vegetables. But anyway. So Emmy Jones, another, another really, really corrupt individual. Before we end, I want to check out one, one more thing with, for you, with you guys. Have you guys been checking out, um, the streamers? I know, I don't know if you guys watch a lot of, uh, uh, streamers that, not necessarily what we do here. We sit somewhere and we talk and chat and, and look at dessert menus and look how, how expensive wine is, but IRL streamers, people who go out in the real world and either they're doing something interesting, maybe playing a sport or just walking or cooking. The problem is we have this thing called nuisance streamers. Those who go to other parts of the country and completely embarrass themselves. And they bother people. They go out their way to really make things uncomfortable because the people who are watching them are giving them donations and, and. because the people who are watching them are giving them donations and, and, and all types of money to basically crash out and, and be weird because they're the clown and people watching it. And the problem is that they're doing this in areas in the country that just aren't familiar with that kind of behavior. Because you've noticed a lot of these nuisance streamers, I'm talking about Vitali, I'm talking about Johnny Somali, they won't do that in Brooklyn. Just, it'd be a bad idea, right? You're not gonna go to, you're not gonna go to South Side of Chicago and try to troll people. It, it better be a very innocent trolling. So they do this in other areas in the world. So Vitali went to the Philippines. And he did this, he kind of behaved. And the problem is, he is still, he's arrested because he's not a citizen. He's Russian. And it looks like he's not going to leave. And it got to a point where uh, the president of the Philippines had something to say and he was not happy about it. So let me show you guys what I'm talking about here.
President Bongbo Marcos vows that his administration will not tolerate foreign vloggers who cause trouble and disrespect Filipinos merely for the sake of content. The president's statement came after the arrest of Russian blogger Vitali Zadorovetsky, who allegedly harassed Filipinos while filming in Bonifacio Global City in Taguig. In a vlog posted on the president's Facebook account on Monday, April 14, Marcos expresses disappointment over how vloggers who cause trouble, annoy, and disrespect others to gain followers have become a part of social media. President Marcos assures Filipinos that those who do such things in the country will not be able to continue to do it to Filipinos. While the president also highlights the kindness and respect inherent in Filipinos, he stresses that these values are being exploited.
All right. None of us understand that language, but clearly he's pissed off, obviously. So imagine flying to another country just to get bodied by the president. Apparently, this is on live TV. So this prankster, and it's, it's a common thing. It seems to happen often where these, these streamers go to, not necessarily YouTubers, but they go into other platforms like Kick or Twitch. There's one called party.com where you're able to do this more risque content and not get deplatformed as quickly as YouTube. But he thought, this, this Vitali dude thought he can go to the Philippines. And with his personal streaming set, and the president Marcos said, you know, try, you know, try it again and you will never come, you'll never come back. It's not about coming back. He's not even, he's not being deported. He's going to stay and be prosecuted and stay in the Philippines. And all you gotta do is go on YouTube and check out Philippine prisons. They're not good. Like, they're not, I mean, all prisons bad? I, I would, I hate, I wouldn't, I've never been arrested before, never will. I don't like prison. I don't like being told what to do. And, but if you check out Filipino prisons, it's not a fun time. And that's what Vitali is going to be for quite some time. The prank stuff just doesn't work. I mean, he's in Philippines thinking that he's going to just be a jackass. And instead of filming people, he's harassing elderly, he's jumping on the random motorcycles, he's pretending to rob people, just being a loud chaotic mess in the Philippines where it's the nicest people in the world exist. And he thought he could just probably get arrested, make it deported. He could move on to the next place to harass people. But the Philippines said, no, you're, you're pretty much stuck here for quite some time. Philippines is not America. You can't just walk into a mall, film yourself, fake robbing people and call it content. Um, that may get you views in other places in the, in the country. It was making you views in Florida. But, but in the Philippines, that gets you arrested. And when the, you got the president mad at you, it's not, it's not a good look. It's not a look. He, he, you know, he's saying like, you're not going to leave. You're not gonna, you're not gonna take advantage of my people. Like, it becomes more of like a nationalistic situation. Like, you can't come here being a foreigner, take advantage of my people and expect to get away with it. It's not gonna work. So that's why Vitali is in a whole heap amount of trouble. I don't know if Putin is going to be able to get him out of this one. He may be kind of screwed. Um, there's some more videos I want to check out real quick. I hope that, I think this is in English of what exactly is happening to this streamer. And please, anyone else trying to do this, please don't. It, it's not a good idea. It's pretty, pretty bad idea.
Let him off easy. So he will not- Government employees don't get breaks.
This is your first live interview, I heard?
Yes, yes, it is.
And we have so many topics to discuss today, Yusek. Let's start off with that Russian blogger who made quite the headlines for his content. I mean, you even have the president commenting, expressing his dismay that that should not be tolerated. Uh, give us an update, Yusek. What's the latest on the investigation, the charges on this Russian blogger?
So briefly, what happened last week, DILG Secretary John Vicremulia called for a press conference to present the Russian blogger Vitali Storovetsky to the media. And this was based on a blotter that was filed in Taguig, where he, where Vitali, based on the report, committed disruptive and inappropriate acts, to quote the report.
Who filed the blotter?
Some victims in Taguig. So I'm sure you've seen-
The victims themselves?
Yes. I'm sure you've seen the videos. You know, he was caught harassing a Filipina. He tried grabbing the cap of a security guard, as you can see there. And then there were other acts that he committed in, in Boracay. You know, this guy has been around. He's been doing this since 2012 all over the world. He's been in the States, he's been to Brazil, Egypt, the UK.
So that's crazy. You couldn't do that here. There's no way you can do that. You're not gonna walk up on any cop that close and pretend to grab their firearm or grab their hat and all this goofy stuff that he's doing. He's noticed because Filipinos are really, really nice, nice people. But as you see, he, he made, he went to the wrong place.
Doing this sort of thing. Now, Secretary John Vic has said, he violated our laws and he disrespected Filipinos. You know, Filipinos are, we are, we are friendly people, we are hospitable people. But this guy took advantage of us. And ang malas niya, you know, if, if other countries merely deported him, ang malas niya ngayon, you know, his puff luck is that we have Secretary Remulia saying now that we're not gonna let him off easy. So he will not be deported. He will, he will stand trial here. He will face the charges here. And hopefully, he will be jailed here.
So where is Vitali right now?
Vitali is currently detained at the Bureau of Immigrations Detention Center in Camp Bagong Diwa. And he will await trial there.
And what charges specifically will be filed against?
There are several charges that he's already facing. There are several counts of unjust vexation. There's theft, attempted robbery even, I think is one of the cases that he's fa, he's facing. You know, in the inquest that was conducted, uh, he admitted to it. In the presence of his counsel, he admitted to doing those acts.
And these are pranks, but the problem is it, it, it's, it's not necessarily a prank. When you, you, you know, fake robbing someone to the victim, they may not know it's a prank. You know, it takes, it, it, yeah, you could say it was just some jokes, but they're not playing around. Some big dude that you've never seen before, doesn't look like you, walks up to you talking about giving you money or whatever weird stuff that he's doing, that person doesn't know that you're joking around. So yeah, he has a lot of problems right now with the acts that he has done. I don't know how long he was even there to, to rack up all these charges.
So like I said, Secretary John Vic wants him to, to stand trial here and he'll face the consequences here.
But can he argue that it was all for content? I mean, for social media, um, yeah.
He can argue it all he wants, right? But the bottom line is he violated laws. He committed acts against Filipino citizens, which is against our laws. So he can argue it all he wants. Uh, he can, he can, he can take it to court.
So Yusek, I mean, what message is the DILG trying to send here to foreigners who come to the Philippines to make content? And I guess also disrupt the lives of Filipinos while they're here?
You know, creating, uh, content such as Vitali's, you know, he can go about doing that all he wants. But you know, it was in an editorial in Manila Times the other day. And they were saying, while arguments rage about regulating content and such, let's not forget that there are already existing laws that people need to follow. And he tried creating his content at the expense of the Filipinos, making them look like fools. That's what Secretary John Vic didn't like. So, so we'll, we'll, we'll await the trial and we'll see what happens.
You know what I found quite interesting?
He's, he's screwed. He's screwed. He's a hundred percent screwed. You could tell even by the tone of the man's voice, he is angry. Like you, you, like you said, you, you took advantage of our, you took advantage of our people. We, 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 we were nice to you, hospitable to you, welcomed you. And you thought that you could play us. And you thought that you could sit back and make a mockery of us and get a, get a good amount of money and then fly off to the next place to do this. And he is not leaving anytime soon. Obviously, I'm always be trying to cover that as well. I didn't know I was, I was going two hours in this. Whoa, that was actually pretty, pretty fast, actually. But Stephanie says, why would you be known for this? It's, it's, it's a very interesting sect of streamers. So I'm not sure if you guys check out a lot of those type of streams because they're not, they're not necessarily on YouTube a whole lot. Like, you see a few. But if you go to kick.com, it's like another streaming site. It's only streaming. They don't, I don't think they have on-demand videos unless it's like recorded streams. But a lot of those platforms, they have these kinds of content. And he's notorious at this. Johnny Somali is even crazier. I don't know if you've been checking out any of my videos talking about him. He's probably 10 times worse than this guy. And same, same situation. Johnny Somali is, is stuck in South Korea. He cannot leave. He has trials. He's already been, he already pled guilty to some crimes. Similar situations. I think at least for Johnny Somali, it's worse because he is blatantly throwing out racist slurs, just saying outrageous things, like going to, uh, in Japan, he got, he got banned from Japan, talking about Himashima, Nakasaki. Some areas, he's, he's doing a higher Hitler, like a lot of really goofy, off-the-wall, cringey, clowny stuff. So this is the kind of stuff that these streamers do. And I think most of these countries are gonna start to be very, very aggressive, especially on foreign people doing this kind of goofy things. That if you do this and you get, you get in trouble, you're not leaving. And the last thing you want to do is be a foreigner and be somewhere you're not supposed to be in their jail cell or in their prison system. It's terrible. It's, it's not a good idea. So. But on that note, guys, this was a pretty fast two hours. Pretty enjoyable. It was nice to talk about different types of topics and stuff like that. If you are interested in any of this type of thing, please hit subscribe if you haven't. Hit the like. I'll be kind of chopping up some of these videos that are out there for you guys. So you don't have to always, you don't have to sit back and watch, you know, two hours of this. And we will, and I'm gonna try to do this once a week. There's so much going on that I, I guess it may not be that much of an issue to do this, but any stories, let me know. There's some stories I didn't even get the chance to do yet, but you know, time is kind of, kind of flying by here. If you have any stories that you want me to cover, please email me. I, I am behind on emails. It's a lot going on. Hopefully, in the next couple of days, I can kind of get, clean up some of my, my inbox and see what's going on. But thank you guys for checking out this channel. Have a good night and I'll see you guys next time.